Really? You like when I do that? Yeah. I want this meeting in the morning.
Yeah, don't worry. You're living the dream, buddy.
At the Monday, April 9th, meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallow. Counselor Harry.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Bowe.
Here.
All present. Consent agenda. Approval of council workshop meeting minutes February 28th, 2018. Approval of executive session meeting minutes of March 12th, 2018. Counselor Hilton abstains, absent. Approval of special counsel meeting minutes February 27th, 2018. Approval of special counsel meeting minutes February 10th, 2018. Approval of special counsel meeting February 6th, 2018. Counselor Ryan abstains, absent. Approval of special counsel meeting January 27th, 2018. Counselor Bowe abstains, absent. Approval of special counsel meeting January 10th, 2018. Received the minutes from the following boards and commissions. The Charter Review Commission 4, zoning board review, budget committee 2, planning board, conservation commission, harbor and coastal water management commission, and senior center April newsletter. Correspondence received and filed James Town Council resolution and supported the removal of the sunset provision regarding the Residential Mortgage Foreclosure Mediation Act H-7385 and S-2270. Exodus West Greenwich Regional School District Resolution supporting school construction general obligation referendum. William Gerlick, co-facilitator, sustainable seconded invitation to attend viewing of award-winning document Terry Aplastic Ocean on Saturday, April 28th at 1:00 p.m. at the Tiverton Library Community Room. Barrington Resolution in opposition to Governor's FY 2019 budget request for quasi-public reserve transfers. Foster Resolution in opposition to proposed inclusion of North Atlantic Regional National Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program. Doc Smith Real. School Committee Resolutions, opposition to legislation mandating expired teachers' contracts continue at existing terms, opposition to all binding arbitration legislation, support of school construction general obligation referendum, support of H-7696 and S-2181 amending article of seven of the Rhode Island Constitution.
Twelve.
Twelve, I'm sorry. Approval of task assessor abatement, town administrator police firing DPW overtime reports, Susan Gill, administrator officer for planning board, March monthly report, town administrator monthly department reports, scheduling a public hearing for chapter six alcoholic beverages, article six outdoor seating on May 21st, 2018. I'd like to pull 1A approval of council workshop meeting minutes February 28th off the agenda. Any other counselor would like to pull anything else?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards.
CA 2A and CA 8.
Madam President.
CA 2A and CA what?
Eight, the last one.
Counselor Hilton?
I also have CA 8.
Okay. Anyone else like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda excluding CA 1A, CA 2A, and CA 8?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. CA 1. CA 1A. The only thing that's missing are the minutes. If you read the front of it, it says Wednesday, but no month. So I'd like to amend it for that to be Wednesday, February.
Madam President. Yes. There's also another inconsistency. I was not present at that meeting, and I'm marked down as present. I was absent. Thank you.
So I'd like to entertain a motion with the amendments to approve A 1A.
Madam President, I have a question here. If you were absent...
No, I was there.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. But it says we're absent.
Oh, maybe I wasn't there.
Basically, it's saying that everybody...
Everybody was absent.
If Counselor Shabbat, there was no quorum, there was no meeting.
Um, let's see. Counselor Ryan was there, Counselor Hilton was there, Counselor Harry was there, and... This is the workshop. This is the one with... Yeah, I was there. Rain Joe from URI. So there wasn't a quorum? There was no quorum.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Yes.
So essentially, you're not required to file minutes then, but if you wanted to file the minutes of just showing there was not a quorum, you could do that since they've been drafted.
Counselor Shabbat here. No, I'm sorry. I had her here, and I'm in our minutes. So it was just a presentation. It was a presentation of the council. We can approve this.
All right. So we're going to amend that Counselor Shabbat was out?
Counselor Shabbat was out, and we're putting February on there.
So I'll make that motion then.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. Received the minutes from the following board of the commission, Charter Review Commission.
Thank you. I know I brought this up the last meeting regarding the Charter Review Commission, some of the stuff that's going on, and that's not knowing quite what's happening, but again, I read through the minutes that they put forward, and I've got a lot of concerns with some of the items that they put in there. I'm happy to run down some of those very quickly. First off, there are numerous grammatical spelling errors throughout the documents, so I'm not sure if we want to accept those and put those into the record just based off of that. Secondly, throughout the documents, they refer to themselves as quote-unquote commissioners, and I was unaware that this is a title that was bestowed upon members of that committee. Within the charter, there is no specific delegation of titles, and I take offense to the fact that they're arbitrarily giving themselves titles, which they don't have and are not granted anywhere in either state law or through our existing charter. Secondarily to that, in one of the meeting minutes, they refer to going into closed executive session. There is no documentation as to what they talked about, and when it comes to executive session, I'll direct my comments to the solicitor and ask him. I was under the impression that there were specific reasons why a board would go into executive session, which included potential litigation and discussing personnel matters, disposition of property, various items which, to my knowledge, are not powers that are granted to the Charter Review Commission under the existing charter nor in state law. And so I'm concerned because it seems to me that they're doing something they do not have the power to do.
So first, you're correct that executive session is a limited number of enumerated reasons why you can go into executive session, and that's in Title 42, Chapter 46, Section 5 of the Open Meetings Act. And the Charter Review Commission is, its duties under the charter is to recommend amendments to the charter, which go to the town council and then sent to voters. So I don't know what they were talking about in that session, since I wasn't privy to it, but that could be legitimate concern based on what they were discussing.
I also want to add, too, that I've noticed nowhere in the minutes did they refer to sealing minutes or anything along those lines, and so if that vote was not taken and there was no proof, then technically those minutes are open, right?
Right. Unless you vote to seal the minutes, the minutes are a public document like any other minutes.
Okay. And then finally, there is reference to a quote-unquote executive board that the charter commission alleges they have, and again, I was unaware that there was an executive board inside of the Charter Review Commission. I thought they were just the Charter Review Commission.
It's not set out in charter, and I'm not aware of that committee either, so...
So if I'm hearing things correctly, it sounds to me that this is something we might want to look into because they may in fact be in violation of the charter, the charter that they are supposed to go out and review.
It's possible. It's possible, so it might be something you want to look into.
Okay. And so one more question for you, Mr. Solicitor. What can we as a council do to find out these answers?
Well, you could ask for a member of the charter commission to come to a meeting, put it as an agenda item, and ask some questions about what's been going on. Of course, you could always, town administration can always discuss with the charter commission. I'd be happy to do a presentation for them about the Open Meetings Act or anything along those lines if it was the pleasure of the council to have us do that.
Okay. I know we can't take votes on anything, but I would just like to ask, I guess, the clerk and the president if for the next agenda item we could make this, or the next agenda we have, we could make this an item and ask the chair to appear before the council and explain what is going on with the Charter Review Commission.
Okay.
And...
I'll get in touch with Rob.
And given some of the issues that I've raised, Mr. Solicitor, would it be acceptable for me to vote not to accept these?
That's fine.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'll make a motion to not accept CA 2A and ask them to make revisions. I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? CA 8. This was Counselor Hilton and Counselor Edwards. Whoever wants to go first?
Sure.
Ladies before gentlemen, sorry.
Counselor Hilton, if you would like to speak, I'd be happy to hear your thoughts. I have a feeling that they're going to be similar to mine.
I don't know.
Okay. So the only point I wanted to make on this is the document that was presented back to us does not seem to reflect any of the initial discussion that the council had regarding this amendment, and it looks as though it's exactly the same thing that we asked for revisions on, and so I'm concerned that we're going to go back to another public hearing to discuss something we've already discussed ad nauseam without revisions that we asked for.
Counselor Hilton?
Actually, Counselor Edwards, I'm going to disagree with you on that. I was actually pretty pleased because I thought this really did address, or at least the concerns that I had. The reason that I put it on was simply, and I'm sure Nancy has this, but the way it was written, it was, the agenda item is to advertise alcoholic beverages, outdoor seating, but it's also the vic shilling licenses as well, and I just, it's...
Is it all under that chapter?
Actually, you need to create a new chapter for vic shilling licenses because it's set out in the general laws, but you never had an ordinance to go along with that, so...
Should that be advertised as such?
It hasn't been advertised. It's a request. So should we put...
Yeah, I think adding vic shilling and liquor license would be best if you decided to advertise.
So my concern was really just a logistic thing, but I actually was, when I read through it in detail, I was pretty happy that I thought the solicitor did a good job of addressing our concerns.
So Counselor, go ahead.
Is it just that we're going to set a date for the hearing? We're not going to, we don't have to take a vote at the hearing. We can continue it if we don't like what we see, correct?
Oh, absolutely, like we do at other hearings, but...
I just, I'm just concerned because of the time limit. They're going to start, a lot of these businesses want to start doing open seating outdoor, and if we keep prolonging it, it'll be September, and the season will be gone for them, so that was one of the concerns.
John, is there something in particular?
Yeah. The discussion regarding vic shilling licenses and then the requirements placed around the outdoor seating. To my recollection, we asked the solicitor to address specifically what the state law was requiring us to address, and this seems to go far beyond that scope.
Madam President?
Yes.
Do we know, or John, maybe you do, do you know when that was, just to save me from looking through all the...
I don't remember exact dates, but I know it came up. We had another administrator at the time.
It was one of the 27 meetings we had in January.
It was in January. Well, that's good. No, because I actually thought it was good. So you took me by surprise when you said that it was very different from what we had discussed, because I thought, oh, this looks good. So I would like to, I just wanted to...
We're going to have a hearing to talk about it anyways. I just wanted to...
No, I know, but I wanted to compare.
Would you like to address the concerns of state law?
So I think, I think if there's, if it's going to need to come down to a vote at the council of what they'd like to see in it, it'd probably be better to put it to the hearing, and that way you can vote and say, take this out, put this in, we'll go back, redraft it, give it a second reading, and you can say, think of what you like there.
Okay.
But if, so if it's something that needs to come to a vote, that might be the best process to vote through.
But it was in January, you think?
I now...
I thought it was early.
You think it was all the way back then?
Yeah. It was a while back.
You were not interim.
Yes, you're right.
It was in September.
September?
I think it was September.
Wow. We're overdue to get this done.
Yes, because they were trying to get the late license for this ground.
You're right, and Paul McGrady was not soliciting.
And they had some...
Was our administrator.
With the establishment.
Right, and they wanted to get that license by November, when, okay, so that we get, we got that back to September.
I think it's all the way back then.
I think they were trying to do it for Labor Day, if I'm not mistaken. They were trying to do something for Labor Day.
All right, so we'll approve the hearing.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept CA 8.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. Open public forum announcements, comments, and questions. Peter, for the open forum, I have two requests to talk about the ordinance amendment regarding, that's on the agenda. Now, I closed that public hearing, and we're just hopefully going to make a decision this evening. Do I have to?
Right, so usually...
Am I required to have more people speak?
Usually, when someone signs up for a public comment on something that's posted on the agenda, you refer them to that item on the agenda where they could speak on it. Since for this has already been the public hearing, both sides or interested parties have had a chance to speak on it, it'd be appropriate to go and have the council deliberate at that point, especially because you've already closed the public hearing at the last meeting. You don't, you don't want to get into a situation where you...
Well, my concern is if I let one side speak, then now I'm opening a can of worms where the other side, I should have speaks.
Yeah, that's exactly appropriate concern.
We had an hour and a half open public meeting where everyone was allowed to speak as much as they wanted to, so I think I'll go along with the solicitor's opinion and recognize that it was a closed, it was a closed public hearing, and it's later on in the agenda. The next item is Leroy E. Kendricks, Chair Wastewater District Project Update. Welcome.
Good evening. I know that you have a packed agenda tonight, and so I just had four.
Lucky you're going first.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
This was the plan tonight.
This was great. Thank you. So I have just four short items that I would like to go over in the interest of keeping the counselors and the public kind of up to date as to what's going on with us. The first item I would like to talk about is the project that has to do with Riverside Drive and Robert Gray area. We, as you heard, we went out to bid. The bids came in high. We went back to our engineer to re-sculpt the project. The engineering has been done. We have, we submitted our drawings to USDA for their approval, and that's where we are. It kind of takes a while for them to do their thing. I did talk to the program director on Friday, and she said at least three to four weeks. So in the meantime, we're on hold with the project until we, until their engineer reviews it. She's a new director, and she's, their engineer is swamped, and so we just wait. One thing I did want to emphasize, though, that when we had our public hearings on these projects, we made the commitment that the assessment was going to be not to exceed $18,000, and that is guaranteed, so there's no concern on our part that it's going to exceed what we said, because we said that, that question did come up in the public hearing, what if it goes over? And I said, well, it can't go over because that's what we committed to. So I just want to reassure the counselors and the public that that's what we're committed to. As part of lessening the cost of the project, we had to separate out the abutters. These abutters are people that currently abut the sewer or for the sewer, and we have another program for them. Instead of them being part of the project, we're using sewer, or we're encouraging them to use the sewer tie-in loan fund called the Stealth Fund. It's a low-interest fund by Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, and the terms are favorable. All of this is on our website, but the terms, there's a $300 loan origination fee and a 1% annual servicing fee, which is equivalent to a 1% interest, I guess, on the outstanding balance. Residents can borrow up to $10,000 for a term of up to five years. And I did want to also say there's additional funding source from the Church Community Housing. They have two loan programs. One is a 3% interest loan up to $30,000 for up to 15 years, so if someone needed to really stretch it out, that's available. And then there also is a zero-interest loan that Church Community Housing has that they can borrow up to $5,000. This is for seniors that are 60 years or older up and persons with disabilities, and that loan does not have to be paid back until the house is sold or the title is transferred. So there are a variety of ways that the sewer can be tied in, so, but we have this up on our website, twwd.org, and so any questions, please, we're trying to put everything up we can on the website, so I encourage people to go there. If you don't find what you need there, then call the office. My third item is just kind of a housekeeping thing. We are currently advertising for a general manager, and we also have a board vacancy, and so anyone interested in those positions, there's a position description on the website, and as far as a board member is concerned, the board member that resigned was a financial person, so if you particularly have an interest in financials, we'd love to talk to you. The last thing I'd like to address is the 2020 deadline. I think there was some concern about that. RITM is very supportive of this project, and they have assured us that as long as we're making progress toward construction, that they'll allow some flexibility to the residents and to the district on the 2020 deadline. I mean, their interest is to get people hooked up on sewer, not to be an obstructionist in that, so that's the four items that I had, so...
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Is that a volunteer position?
It is. We get exactly zero per year.
And you might know somebody's interest.
But it's very...
You guys are the money.
But it's very rewarding. I've been with the commission and the district for probably close to 10 years now, so...
Counselor Edwards?
Thank you. Leroy, just two questions for you. For the RITM, did they send you guys anything in writing? Can we ask them to send you something in writing? Because generally, I don't trust Rhode Island DEM or really any state agency when they say something off the cuff, because they're inclined to come back and say something different depending on who you talk to.
I would be happy to solicit something in writing or some...
Because that was in the enabling legislation, which that's what concerns me.
Sure.
And if we have to assist you guys in going back to amend the enabling legislation to reflect a date change, I think that's something we should do because of the delays in the program. And then the other question on the, on the enabling legislation for the board, I noticed you guys have, I think it's five members?
Yes.
I know that those terms were set out in the initial phase, but at some point, you guys are going to have to actually, I think, expand the board to seven?
No, we have the flexibility to expand to seven.
Okay.
Five is the minimum, and seven is the maximum.
Gotcha. Because I just want to make sure that, you know, that there aren't going to be any issues with that and making sure that you're bringing in new board members and all that sort of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Public hearings, advertised public hearings, public hearing comprehensive community plan updates, proposed 2017 comprehensive community plan updates and possible vote. I am going to call for a vote to continue to April 30th. After thinking about this and putting it on a regularly scheduled meeting, this is another topic that would be long and take a few hours, I believe, and it deserves our time and our attention, so...
Madam President.
At this point, I'd like to call for a vote.
I think I have to make a motion to, yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the item B1 to April 30th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And it'll be April 30th at 7:00 o'clock here at Town Hall. Right? Nancy?
Yes.
Okay.
You booked the room?
Well, that's what I'm worried about. Andrew Snyder, 605 Neck Road, requests approval of sound variance on September 8th, 2018 from 5:00 to 11:00 for outdoor wedding and reception in a tent and non-advertised special event permit and F full liquor license. Mr. Snyder, I know you're here. Could you, could you come up for a moment? Hi. So we have in our packet a description of the event. Is there any questions from the council?
I have just one question, only because I don't know. If you're, do you need anything special to have fireworks on your property? Because this does say it includes fireworks, yes?
So there's, that's just part of the, other than speaking with the town fire department, but making, this is just part of the noise variance request.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Would this require the fire department to approve this, or at least the fire marshal to?
If I could add, Ocean State Pyrotechnics is the one who are doing it, and it's only a two-minute show, and they take care of the permits.
All right. I was thinking like this big show, but no, that's okay. Any other questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the sound variance on September 8th, 2018 from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 605 Neck Road for Andrew Snyder for the outdoor wedding and reception in a tent. Can I combine the liquor license? No?
You have to do that separately.
Separately? Okay, so I'll make that motion for the sound variance now.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to also make a motion to approve the non-advertised special event permit and Class F full liquor license for Andrew Snyder, 605 Neck Road from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on September 8th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Oh, I do. Madam...
Go ahead.
I just noticed on one of these, expected number of attendees is 200, and another one is 150. Is that...
That's because we don't know, but it will not exceed 200.
Okay.
Okay, that was all.
Any other questions? Nancy, do you have? Nancy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have, I actually had two questions. On this liquor, will you be selling liquor?
No.
At this, there's no selling of liquor, so it's okay.
Yeah, so technically, under state law, if you're selling, you need a license. You can either get a Class F license, which allows individuals to do it one day, or you have a Class P license, which your caterer gets ahead of time, and they can send it to place to place.
We went back and forth on this, and they seemed to feel that this was the better way to do it.
And you can grant the license still, just to give a belt and suspenders approach, but if you're not selling alcohol and it's on your own private property, technically you don't need a license, so...
Would you like us to still go through with this, just to...
That's really up to the clerk's office. They've requested this.
I guess I don't need it if you're saying you don't need it.
If you're not going to sell, then...
You're not going to sell.
Not going to sell anything.
So sound variance would be enough.
I'm just going to point out that this is, this is a $35 revenue hit that you're going to...
Because I'm so early in the agenda, I'm willing to contribute the $35.
So we don't need a motion for the liquor license? So, we don't need a motion for the liquor license?
No, not if he's, if he's not going to sell, he doesn't need a license.
Madam President, I'll withdraw my motion.
Andrew, you're all done.
Thank you very much.
Tell the bride and groom good luck, and I hope it goes well.
Congratulations.
Public hearing advertised, I'm sorry, town council, city's voted licensing, Phantom Fireworks, 525 Main Road, request fireworks license and holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Anyone here from Phantom? I believe you had this license last, a couple of years.
Yes, we did not have it last year. We had it the prior year and at least a prior year to that. That's correct.
Any concerns with the fire department? No? Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fireworks license and holiday license for Phantom Fireworks at 525 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Don't we still have to approve this special event?
Oh, yeah. See, I, yes.
For Mr. Snyder?
Well, no.
Actually, I'll approve it.
Okay.
We don't have to do that, right?
A clerk can approve them, usually if there's 100 or other reasons.
Okay. Jamil Arthur Matisz.
Would you like me to approach?
Yes, please. Well, I just butchered your name, so, yes.
He looks like a PI.
153 Moon Avenue, request private investigative license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Have you had this license in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the private investigator license for Jamil Arthur Martz?
Martitz.
Martitz.
Yes, sir.
Martitz. 153 Born Ave, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Congratulations. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you, guys.
No one's investigating you, so.
Kevin and Susan Boulay Riverside Marina LLC, 211 Riverside, request for holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is anyone here from Riverside Marina? Any comment from the clerk? No?
Well, this is a renewal.
Okay.
Madam President?
It's only a holiday license. We don't even get a fee. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the holiday license for Kevin and Susan Boulay Riverside Marina, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Appointments and resignations, resignation Peter Mello, first alternate zoning board. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept his, Peter's resignation with our appreciation for all his service to Tiverton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Did you go?
I'm sorry, I thought so. Appointment of Jennifer Hilton, 128 Church Pond Drive, first alternate zoning board currently holds second. Is Jennifer here? I don't think I see her. Any discussion from the council?
Madam President, I have one question, because I know Jennifer Hilton's on the planning board too, right? No?
No. She's only on the zoning.
Only on the zoning? Okay, never mind, that was the zoning we pointed for. Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to, to appoint Jennifer Hilton, 128 Church Pond Drive, to the position of first alternate zoning board.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Annual appointment of planning board administrator officer, Susan Gill, planning board recommendation. Any discussion from the council?
Madam President?
Council Edward?
I just have one point that I'd like to make. When Susan graciously volunteered to take up this position, she did so under the assumption that we were going to do something to provide her some assistance and find somebody, you know, to do this full-time. And I'm a little disturbed, because I thought by now, you know, we would have somebody to fill that role. And I feel like we, as a town, and we as a council, are taking advantage of Susan and her generous offer to step up and do all this work. So I, you know, I think that we should strongly consider finding an alternative here, so we stop taking advantage of this, you know, volunteer who also serves on the board.
Well, I do know that we had one application for a planner, and we're still in the process.
Correct. As the personnel board has conducted its interview, and we'll have a follow-up interview next, next week.
So this will help Susan eventually. I, I would assume that if Susan's name is here, that she is willing to continue on until we find an alternative. Is that true, Susan? And the planning board did recommend her unanimously, I understand. She's done a, a fine job, an excellent job, actually. She's going to have to stay on for a little while to orient whoever comes aboard to take over this position, because she's gained a lot of knowledge at this point, and she has a lot of projects. Is there any other discussion?
I, one other question for Stu, if possible. If the, in the letter you sent, it says that you guys posted, you voted unanimously. We don't have an issue with the fact that Susan's also on the board, right, to appoint herself to this position? I just want to make sure that that's not an issue.
No, no, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I think it's actually, I mean, I, I'm very grateful to Susan for doing this. I think it's imperative that she stays on. She said that she's willing to do it. She knows all the stuff. And it sounds like we might have somebody soon, so it would be really important to have a seamless transition and not have another person in there who doesn't know what they're doing or, you know, is going to have to. I, I just think it's amazing to me that if Susan is willing to do it, I think it's, I think it would be wonderful to have her.
Madam President?
Council Hilton?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Susan Gill for one year or until such time as a new administrative officer is named to the position of administrative officer of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion regarding this? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Five. Against? Two. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Unfinished business, proposed ordinance amendment requested by Raymond Johnson Chemical Holdings LLC on Article 4, Section 5H, public utility uses, Section 6J, open recreation uses, and Article 10, Section 3, parking, storage, and use of major recreational equipment in a residential district. Continued for March 26 meeting, public comment portion was closed. So at the last meeting, we were giving copious amounts of paperwork, and everyone wanted to go home and read it and make sure that they had all the facts before we made a decision. At this point, I'd like council discussion. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Madam President?
Council Lobo?
The biggest concern that I have with this, with this ordinance being put in place or not being put in place, by not allowing Mr. Johnson to have his business on this property and changing the ordinance to get it down to zoning, we have no control over what happens on his property. And I know the biggest issue right now is motorcycle riding around down there. This ordinance, by saying no, is not going to stop motorcycles from riding there.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. We can't tell Mr. Johnson that he can't drive motorcycles on his property.
Well, we can tell him to a limit.
No, no, we can't limit him. Now, let me finish, and then we'll let the attorney do his thing. He can have motorcycles ride on his property, so long as he doesn't break any sound ordinances. The ordinance is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. If we grant this man his license, we can control what hours are there. We can tell him he can run on four Sundays. We can tell him he can only run until 4:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday. As it is now, if we tell him no, and he wants to stop at 7:00 a.m. and close at 6:59 a.m. every single night, so long as he doesn't break an ordinance, we can't control that. That's like telling somebody they can't have a barbecue on their property. My opinion, Mr. Solicitor.
So, what, what the ordinance was aimed to address was a commercial recreational use.
Correct.
So if you have, if you have a commercial recreational use where you're collecting money for operating motocross, as it stands now, that would be in violation of the ordinance. There are some other restrictions, including the sound ordinance and special event, based on how many people come. But if your question is whether one person driving on or one or two people driving on the property without violating the sound ordinance, without violating the special event ordinance and not doing it for a commercial, as a commercial use, then you're, you're correct, that would.
But we can't limit him to one or two. We can limit him not to make noise, not to violate a noise ordinance.
Is that true? Because I thought that he couldn't have a certain amount of people.
There's, there's a couple of overlapping things. There's the special event provision, which has a limitation on the number of people you could have for an outdoor special event. There's the noise ordinance, which prohibits the certain decimal level when measured for the property line. And there's the provision of the zoning ordinance that prohibits a commercial use, in this case, would be a commercial recreational use in a residential zone. So those are the three regulatory areas that, you know, Mr. Johnson would be concerned with. This would allow him to, the proposed ordinance would allow him to conduct the commercial use in a residential zone by grant of a special use permit, which would go to the zoning board. They can review it, see whether or not it creates a nuisance, add conditions, that sort of thing. But as it stands now, there's no, there is a prohibit, there's a prohibition of having a commercial use. There's a prohibition if it reaches a certain number. There's a prohibition if it reaches a certain noise. But if, if it doesn't reach any of those limits, then it's not, there is no prohibition specifically for, for motocross.
Could you tell me what the prohibition is on the number of riders he's allowed there? Because I never seen, I went through everything, and I didn't find anything that says he can't have 100 guys, so long as he doesn't break the sound ordinance.
Yeah, let me, let me just pull up the special event.
But this is now, we're talking, I'm not talking about an event, I'm not talking about a commercial business. I'm talking about, Ray has a lot of friends. If he has 50 friends every Saturday and Sunday, and they want to ride for 12 hours, and he doesn't break any ordinance, there's nothing that we can do about it. So I say grant the guy a license, and we can control what he does. Right now, we're not going to have control. So that's my thought on what's happening.
Peter, we've discussed this before with Tony, and he isn't allowed to have 50 people there. He's allowed to have a couple of friends there, and we've, we've discussed that before.
No. I want to see it in the, I want to know what's going on, so I know how to make my vote in the next five minutes.
Let me, let me pull up the, so, it's Section 51, and it has a definition of public entertainment, and it has both non-commercial and commercial defined there. And when it talks about, okay, and talking about non-commercial entities and individuals, outdoor public entertainment, non-commercial entities and individuals desiring to provide outdoor public entertainment must obtain a public entertainment license from the town clerk. And it has certain definitions about the number of persons that can attend that, and...
Could you tell me what that number is?
We have to speak up. We can't. Okay, I apologize. But, and, and in any event, the, the use that's allowed now, any use that's incidental to a recreational use is allowed in a residential zone. So, any normal, any normal residential use, and this, this, this issue actually came up with the Pelletier case, the Tiger Tree case, where, and finding a line between what, when you cross over from residential to commercial, has, often has to do with the size of your operation. So, the compost creation in the Pelletier case, a residential zone can make compost on, on their property. But what the court found was, because it reached a certain size and a certain intensity, that it was, that it was no longer an incidental use to the, to the permitted use, it became its own principal use, which wasn't permitted.
But how, how, my question is, how are we going to stop a person from using his property if it's his friends coming over to ride? It's no different than having a cookout on Saturday with 30 of your friends. Where, I want to know where the difference is. I need a number. You're not giving me a number.
So, I...
Like, can he have 50 people?
I think, to use that example, and I think, you know, it goes to an issue of enforcement, because, you know, that's, the line is where a zoning enforcement officer and ultimately a court would decide when you'd cross over from having an incidental use to a residential use to no longer having residential use.
Correct. So, people, including myself, have been riding on that property since we were little kids. And now, I can see not giving them a business, but we can't tell people they can't go ride there. That's just not, I don't think it's constitutional in the beginning. All I want is a number. Say, yes, Ray, you can have 30 people. I need a number. If it's in there, if it's not in there, I want to know. There is no number, and he can do whatever he wants on that property.
So, when I was referring to the public entertainment license before, I was thinking of a number, but that's attached to the indoor public entertainment.
Okay.
The outdoor public entertainment doesn't have a specific number.
Okay.
But I think what you would look at is...
Like, if he broke a sound ordinance? If he's breaking the sound ordinance, then he has to stop.
It would be a sound ordinance, and that would be when a residential use would become something where it's no longer a residential use.
But who determines such a use? Who would say?
It would be a zoning enforcement officer. If he disagreed with that, he could appeal it to the zoning board, and if they, and if the zoning board made a decision that he didn't agree with, he could appeal it to a court, and the court could make a decision.
But who, why would Ray have to appeal it? Why, why wouldn't the town have to appeal it and tell him, well, you know what, Ray? You're breaking the law now. But he, you can't have friends at your house anymore. That's what, that's what this is leading to.
Yeah, you know...
Basically. I mean, you opened up a giant can of worms going on here. I say we give the guy a license, we can control him. If we don't, we can't control what's going on.
I think, I think you're hitting on a couple of things. There's one, there are a number of different enforcement mechanisms. And two, you know, enforcing is not an easy thing, because a lot of times, you need to make a judgment call. But that being said, you know, there is a line where you cross from a residential use to a non-residential use.
But there's not a number of lines. There's not a number of people. There is a noise ordinance. So we don't want the cops having to use our resources, that people calling, oh, he's riding again. Well, he's not breaking the law. So there's nothing we can do. He's not breaking the law. So we don't need the cops there every 10 minutes a day, every Saturday and Sunday. So I'm just saying that the best way, in my opinion, to avoid this thing, is to be able to control that man's operation. Other than that, we're not going to be able to. I'm done. Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, I think it's important to remember that this isn't just Ray's property we're talking about. We're talking about every residential area and changing it, and it's not just that property. So we're talking about throughout town. This is not just, just picking that property and saying that they can do the specific there. It's talking in every residential area in town. And I think that's what the important thing is. That's what this is. John, did you want to say something?
I mean, I will at some point, but if somebody else has comments, by all means.
Madam President, I guess, well, I, I thought the, the crux of it was more is, is changing the zoning and changing the zoning into 100 acres. And when someone said that this was like, oh, there's only a couple of properties like this in Tiverton, that's not true. You can easily buy two pieces of adjacent land, and all of a sudden, you've got more You can easily buy two pieces of adjacent land and all of a sudden you've got more than 100 properties. So it's not just about his property. But I guess the other thing, there's like a number of things that, the planning board unanimously voted to not allow this. The open space committee unanimously voted not to allow this. We've gotten many emails and calls about not having this happen. So the amount of damage this can do to the rest of the town. And this town, we have been consistent in the comp plan, in what people have been saying, we want a small town atmosphere. And if you look at the plans for this, and it's just like the amphitheaters, the noise, the rest, the shops, all of that, none of that looks like a small town atmosphere. So I just don't see how you can, you can, I just don't see how you can approve this. I just, there's so many things that are wrong with it. And to say that it's all one man's property and that's all it's about, it's not. It's about the town.
Any other counselors besides Randy and Chris? Counselor Hilton?
Again, I think it's important to, you know, reiterate the original question. The question in front of us is not whether or not Mr. Johnson should be allowed to do this on his property or not. The question is whether or not we amend the zoning for the entire R80 zone to allow motocross or go-kart tracks or similar activities on those properties. And, and, and that's really, that's really the question. So, you know, if you separate that out from, you know, Mr. Johnson's property, you have to ask yourself whether or not you want to change the zoning to include this type of activity anywhere in the R80 zone. But when you think about what's happened on Mr. Johnson's property and, and the outcome of, you know, the, the nature of the complaint, to me, it's a good example of why this isn't a good fit. I mean, the purpose of zoning and the enabling law lays out in detail the things that zoning can do for you, but amongst those are to provide for orderly growth and, you know, to protect public health and safety, as well as to control things like noise pollution and other kinds of pollution. And, you know, when you have a residential zone, it isn't to say that you can't ever have any commercial things in a residential zone. But what good zoning does is it puts things together that are compatible. In other words, things that can coexist next to each other and not have a negative impact on one type of property or another. And there are plenty of examples of things that we actually allow by right or special use permit in our residential zones, because those things can coexist in a residential zone. As a matter of fact, just a few weeks ago, the council passed the solar installation ordinance, which is an example of a commercial use that can fit and work well in a residential zone without negatively impacting the residential property. And I do believe that early on in this process, one of the things that Mr. Johnson actually asked for was for the town to consider that. As it turns out, the planning board was just, was doing just that. So there's an example of, of a use that Mr. Johnson asked for, and in turn, the town has granted it. But I don't see that, you know, a motocross track, and that's what Mr. Johnson is asking for, is the commercial use of a motocross facility, is a good fit in a residential zone. And, you know, one of the things that came up in there were, a lot of the experts were testifying about, you know, sort of value and what sets property value. In my corporate experience, there's really one thing that sets value and price, and that's supply and demand. And, you know, if you look at a neighborhood like rural South Tiverton, the R80 zone, most of the people who move there or are interested in buying there want to go there because they're choosing a quiet, more peaceful kind of place to live. If you have something that is aggressively loud or disruptive in a neighborhood like that, in a zone like that, not necessarily right away, but, you know, over time, you're going to devalue the surrounding residential properties, because it is a matter of supply and demand. And there simply won't be as much demand in a zone like that for a property that has noise versus other, you know, quieter, more rural properties. So I don't think that this is a, a good fit. I don't think it belongs there. I also, to be honest, am not really understanding Counselor LeBeau's point, because, you know, this is zoning. What you're talking about is licensing. You can't change a zone and make a change to the zoning code that comes with hours of operation or time limits or any of those kinds of things. That comes from the licensing process. So, you know, I don't see how we would even consider changing a zone, but putting restrict, our restrictions on operation. I, I don't even think you can do that within the zoning code.
Anyone else?
Madam President, Counselor Shabbat, if you want to go.
I just wanted to follow up on with the solicitor. So this was before those two comments. So if there was a NOV issued and there's an appeal to the zoning board and that fails as well, the next step is to go to the Superior Court? Appeal to the Superior Court?
Right. And there's actually, there's two different ways to enforce. Either he can take an appeal of, of the zoning board's decision to the Superior Court, or the town could bring an action immediately to the Superior Court or the municipal court to enforce what they are claiming is a violation.
Are we in that process now? But then we, we held off until this, this process goes on. But we are at the court level right now, aren't we not?
Right. The town filed the declaratory judgment action and a notice of violation issued, which also Mr. Johnson appealed. So there's two separate tracks in addition to this track.
Okay.
Counselor Shabbat, do you?
And, and I, just for clarification, part of this zoning ordinance amendment does have the criteria for the special use permit, that does have the hours and the, and months of operation. So I'm confused. Is this, this document in front of us illegal? Based upon what Ms. Hilton said, you couldn't do this in an ordinance?
So traditionally, for a permitted use, you don't impose conditions on the use at the ordinance level. When it's a conditionally permitted use to a special use permit, where they have to go to the zoning board, the zoning board can place conditions, because at that point they see it as one particular application, speaking about one particular property. So they can place conditions specific to a property through the special use permit process.
Okay. So this section three is, is not valid?
No, it is, it would be valid because it's, if it's a special use permit use, you can place conditions on it. So that would basically be telling the zoning board, when you see this use come in, here's a condition we want you to put on by ordinance, in addition to anything else you put on.
Okay. All right. I got it. I just want a clarification.
Anything further, John?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Edmonds go.
Thank you. So obviously, this is a pretty contentious topic. And I've thought a lot about this over the last week. But, you know, when I look at, you know, our comprehensive community plan and, and I look at, you know, the way we've handled zoning traditionally in this town, you know, one of the things that's really stuck out to me is we want to avoid situations where we're setting up zoning specifically for one piece of property. Yet in Tiverton's history, that seems to be what we've done. You know, I look at the villages on Mount Hope Bay, their comprehensive community plan language was written specifically for them. You know, in the last comprehensive community plan discussion we had, we had somebody owns a big piece of property, come up, look for special treatment for him. And just the last council meeting, you know, this council, as a body, myself excluded, voted to switch open space back to R60. We've set a precedent, and that's spot zoning. And so I'm just a little, I'm a little hesitant, obviously, because I don't want to do the wrong thing here. And I don't want to get out of line from where we should be. But we, as a council, and prior councils before us, have all done the same thing. And that's do special things for certain properties. So I almost feel like we've gone ahead and set ourselves a precedent. And during the discussion, one of the things that really stood out to me as well was this, this discussion about golf course versus driving range. And I was really shocked. I didn't even know that we couldn't have a driving range, which typically on a golf course is something you would have to have. And that's not allowed by right. I, I think that there's a lot of problems inside of our zoning regulation. We need to address those as a council. And picking them off one by one is probably not the way to do it. From what I understand, most of what we have hasn't even been codified yet. And we haven't gotten, gotten to that point where we need to put those, put, put some of our, our zoning ordinances into place. Stuff that we have been, you know, putting into the comprehensive community plan. And then the other thing that really stuck out to me as well is in the discussion, there was, you know, a young lady who stood up and she talked about being at, working at the hospital and seeing kids who are injured. And I can tell you, I live in north, the north end of town. There are kids who ride up and down my street on dirt bikes and ATVs. And they're all over the place. You know, and I think that we, as a community, need to think about how we're going to solve that issue. Now, is this the right piece of zoning amendment? I, I don't know. You know, I think that we need to look longer and harder at this, specifically, you know, as it relates to taking something that would be for outdoor recreational use and how we attach other commercial entities to it. So as, as written, not a, not a huge fan of this the way it is, but I think it's a good starting point. And I think we, as a, as a council, need to have that conversation. And we also need to, you know, think about the other voters in this town who would be negatively impacted by us not doing something like this, and who may be injured when they're riding illegally up and down the gas pipelines or on our streets, you know, up, not, not just on the south end of town, but also on the north end of town. So, you know, as it stands, I, I think that we need to continue the discussion on this and find a solution that's going to last for the long term. Because if we, as a council, continue to let special interests come in front of us and, you know, find solutions for that specific piece of property, it's going to be bad long term.
Madam President? No, did you want to do it? God, do you want to?
No, I was going to ask if there was any further.
No. I just want, my recollection of the past discussions about single-use property, there was one on, or two on Fish Grove, did not go over well. So it wasn't that we were trying to do a spot. As a matter of fact, people were saying, no, if you do that, you're going down the wrong pathway. That's one thing. But the other thing is, if you even considered changing this, again, you're talking about all of South Tiverton. This is not one piece of property. This is something that you got to talk about, about, with the town. So if you, if we want to continue, if Mr. Johnson wants to continue to try and think about what use he could use, I don't have a problem with that. But, but to try to, the amount of destruction I can see going on in this town would be awful. And all you have to do is string two pieces of property together. And what he is suggesting that he wants to do is to change it radically. And that doesn't say that the, you know, we need some, we need to do some work on the zoning, but not, not to, not to, not to destroy the town to do that.
Any further discussion? Because I'm going to call for a vote. A, a, I'm sorry, a motion?
I, I would like to point out one other thing for the solicitor's consideration. In the zoning code, there is a definition for a noise disturbance. That while it also indicates that it may be that it exceeds the decibel level, it, it's quite broad and talks about not only the decibel level, but things that are disturbing or unnecessary, the making, creating, or permitting of any noise of such character as to be detrimental to life, health, welfare of an individual, or noise which either steadily or intermittently a noise disturbs, injures, or engages the comfort, repose, peace, and safety of any individual. And later on, if you look further down in the noise ordinance, on page, I'm sorry, I'm doing this online, so I have to scroll, under section, pass motorized vehicles. Sorry, I've lost it.
I got this Chromebook over here.
I know. Hang on a second. Under, under section 38143, motorized vehicles, number F, it says, "No person shall operate a recreational vehicle or permit the operation of one or more recreational vehicles individually or in a group or in an organized racing event on public or private property in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance across a real property boundary." So, you know, to Counselor LeBeau's point, I'm not sure how many or what constitutes that, but our ordinances are fairly clear that, you know, disturbance noise, nuisance noise is not permitted. And I'm not sure that there's anything in there, or we can say at this table, how many friends that is that constitutes that. But again, I do go back to the point that what Mr. Johnson is asking for is not, this is not about friends on Mr. Johnson's property. This is about the commercial use of that property for organized and commercially supported motocross activity.
Any other questions from the council?
I just have a few comments. I'm just a little perplexed. We have been going over the comprehensive community plan. And one of the issues I have with it is the legal non-conforming use property, where basically rights were taken away from property owners when a broad swath of change was made to just put everything in a, in a particular zone. North End went from R10 to R30. And South Tiverton went from whatever it was to R80. And historically, that piece of property is a commercial property. And if you look at the zoning for general commercial, it is a special use permit for general commercial. So by just taking a brush and painting it across South Tiverton and saying, everything is R80, that's not exactly true. There has been traditional commercial businesses there. And they lost a lot of rights when we made them R80. They can't expand, they can't change, they can't improve their business. They can't build a bigger building to build a, a boat. They have to stay in their own, own small building. And I mentioned sturdy boat, and that's been mentioned many times before, that they can't, they can't change. They can't change their business model. They can't in, make improvements, make efficiencies in order to be profitable. So we have hurt businesses in town.
Amen.
By, by changing zoning with just a broad stroke of the paintbrush. And that's why I say, if this property looks like a commercial property, to me, it is a commercial property. And I look at the zoning and it's their commercial property, it does have it as a special use permit. That's one thing. And going, again, on the comprehensive community plan, people are worried in South Tiverton about water. And if this piece of property, how many pieces, how many parcels could this be developed into theoretically, into house lots? And how much, how many wells would have to be installed? And what is the pressure on the water in South Tiverton? I've heard people say that we had a drought and people's wells were running dry. So how much pressure do you want to put in South Tiverton on all of that land being designated as housing? And that's basically what it is. You're making it all residential. Even though there's general auto, M and R feed, there's commercial businesses all over South Tiverton. So I have to, I'm perplexed as to how we, how we balance that and say to a person, yeah, you have a piece of property and you can develop it. Then, so that's, that's looking at the comprehensive community plan. Then, when it comes to what we've done to Mr. Johnson. Last year, he came in for a special event permit. And basically, we told him, no, that he had to go and go to the zoning board. Then we told him, well, he had to go and propose a zoning amendment, get it down to our town planner. That costs money. So we, we have basically given instruction to Mr. Johnson to follow a process, and he's done that. He's followed the process. He's, he's submitted a change so that he can proceed with what he has proposed and making it a zoning amendment, as he was instructed to do. So to me, that's like, boy, we've jerked him around a little bit and we probably should have said, you know, sorry, mister, you can't do anything. should have said, you know, "Sorry, mister, you can't do anything with your property. You just have to pay taxes on it, and that's it. You have a useless piece of property, and we won't allow you to do anything with that piece of property." So, I think that, that's a little unfair. And then, to go to the, um, activities allowed in, for the special use permit, and, and I do think of, of the kids, the young adults, the children and the, and the young adults that would use a type of recreational area like this. And from my experience, um, many years ago, riding, uh, dirt bikes and everything, there is something to be said for it being supervised, it being of, uh, medical services being immediately And I know I've mentioned it before, I have experience in my life where, uh, accidents do happen out in the High Line. Uh, people do get killed, they get injured, and, um, it's very traumatic. So, when I see something like this, I'm like, wow, that would be great for the, for the young adults. Uh, they have an area to go to, a recreational area, and they, it's safe, it's a safe environment, and it's monitored, and, um, it could save, um, a young adult's life because they have, I always remember what my husband said, uh, when he was growing up. He found an activity that basically saved his life. He was into surfing, and that's what he loved to do. His total focus was on surfing. He didn't drink, he didn't do drugs. But his friends in the neighborhood that he grew up with...
Go ahead.
Ended up either in jail, on drugs, or dead from drug overdoses. So, in an effect, there was an activity that saved his life. And I look at it, at this as an activity for young adults. When you're in school, you have soccer, you have basketball, you have football, but once you are out of school, it really is, would be nice to have, um, an area that young adults could, could go to and, and be supervised and, um, have medical, uh, um, safety issues and concerns taken care of, um, and possibly save their life. So, thank you very much. Those are my comments on this.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else? Um, at this point, I was going to entertain a motion unless someone else has something to say.
Ma'am, Counselor Perry, you're the only one who hasn't spoken yet.
This is a no-win situation. No matter which way you go, it hurts. Mr. Johnson or the residents in that area who, who purchased land in an R-80 zone. So, it's a no-win situation. I'm, I'm looking at what the zoning, zoning is, what the planning board recommends and what the solicitor recommends. That's what I'm looking at from this point of view, unless somebody can come up with an idea where we continue it, look into some other ways, you know, it's a no-brainer.
At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion. If someone...
Actually, I would, I would just like to say one thing for the record on behalf of the council, um, it, with regard to something that Counselor Shabbat said about how Mr. Johnson has been treated. From the outset of this process, Mr. Johnson and his legal counsel had two choices. They could have gone directly to the zoning board for the use, for a use variance, or the other option was to go this route, which was to, to, to submit a zoning amendment to the council, knowing that it would go back to the planning board with a recommendation and ultimately back to the council. So, this process that we're going through right now has been Mr. Johnson and his council's choice. And if I'm not mistaken, we've granted at least three, I believe, extensions, um, at Mr. Johnson and his council's request in an effort to make this as fair as possible and to give him all due consideration. So, I do slightly take exception to the fact that we haven't, um, given Mr. Johnson every opportunity to pursue this in a fair way.
Just one rebuttal. He did submit it April of 2017, and it sat and sat.
Of 2017?
It was MIA. All his paperwork was MIA.
Oh, yeah. That, that, right. You have, that, that was the planning.
It was, it was.
It was the prior planner.
Right.
But, but when this came to our attention, we have tried to give it, um, the attention we felt it deserved. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Johnson's, uh, get it down to zoning and let them make their decision.
So, what you're approving is the proposed ordinance, ordinance amendment?
Yes, to get it to zoning and let them make their decision, because that's where it goes from here.
All right, second.
Didn't zoning already happen?
Yeah, it's a little explained, what this, what this ordinance means.
If, if you were to approve this ordinance, it would allow the use, uh, outlined in the ordinance, uh, throughout the R-80 zone by special use permit. So, that way, if any particular applicant, including Mr. Johnson, wanted to take advantage of the use, he would then have to submit an application to the zoning board who could review it and decide.
But this is throughout town and not only Mr. Johnson's property.
Right.
Throughout the zone.
Throughout the 100-acre zone, that's what I'm approving. So, that's, that's my, my...
It's not 100 acres.
Throughout the R-80, it has to be 100 acres.
It's a town, Randy.
But it needs to, it needs to go back to zoning for license, for whatever, the licensing or win.
Special use permit.
Right, for the special use permit, which, where we can kind of regulate a little bit. So, that's, that's my...
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second, right, Joan? Okay.
Discussion?
Any further discussion?
Um, just one point. Can we amend or make suggestions to amend this, this zoning amendment now?
So, you can do it now. The issue is that any proposed change to the language needs to be discussed at, at a public hearing. So, you'd have to give people a chance to speak on it again. Jesus Christ.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll vote for it.
Three against?
I'm abstaining.
All right, so, the motion fails.
That's a push.
I'm abstaining, because, you know, like I said, if there's something...
All right, so, um, I'd like to entertain another motion.
It failed.
Oh, so this all fails? So, it fails. So, um, the ordinance has failed. Thank you, everyone. I'm, I'm going to take about a 10-minute recess.
Thank you for your time.